The time is now 1:01 PM. The State Board of Education is returning to open session. And a quorum of the board is present. Regular meeting of the State Board of Education has reconvened. Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment and I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limit so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. Please finish your sentence and end your comment when the timer goes off. Thank you for your cooperation. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. Any person disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin with those persons that are physically with us in the room today and then move to those in the queue online. First person today is Vanessa Kiesler. It's my understanding you're both coming up to the table at the same time. Yeah, go ahead.
And whenever you're ready, we'll begin your three minutes.
Good afternoon, board members, superintendent and department staff. My name is Vanessa Kiesler. I'm the president and CEO of Launch Michigan. And I'm joined by one of my board members, William Parfitt, who's also the chairman and CEO of the Northwood Group. If you are not familiar with Launch, we are a cross partisan nonprofit focused on reinventing Michigan's public education system and we represent a coalition of business, labor, philanthropy, and education. And we're driven by our three pillar framework, which focuses on ensuring every Michigan student has a meaningful high school diploma when they graduate, ensuring the system is adequately and equitably funded, with a focus on efficiently getting funds to classrooms and students where they belong, and aligning our governance and responsibility throughout the system, again with a focus on efficiency and effectiveness. And in that spirit, we are coming today to talk to you about our Grants Clock Initiative. You are probably aware that the fiscal year '24 budget is $23 billion budget, 20.6 billion of those come to K-12 schools. And while there are a number of distribution mechanisms, one of them, one of the distribution mechanisms is grants. There are 99 grants that we're tracking totaling to almost $4 billion. It's for different types of grants, competitive, direct, formula, and reimbursement. And in the interest of time, you can refer to your materials for more information about that. There are several challenges with the grants process right now. Lack of awareness about upcoming grants due to the legislative cycle. There is a time consuming and inconsistent application process. The distribution of funds has been slow, particularly in recent years, and that impacts district planning and implementation. And this is especially problematic for our historically underserved students and communities. And districts often lack the personnel to apply for these grants. So Launch Michigan has begun the Grants Clock Initiative. Again, your materials include both our press release and a one pager and a QR code to our website. We are aiming to increase accountability and transparency in fund distribution. That's why we're here to speak about it to this body that has supervision over public education in this department. We are tracking available grant opportunities and the distribution process using publicly available data from MDE's Thursday communication, your board minutes, I see you have a number of grants on the agenda today, and district feedback. And we plan to update the Grants Clock monthly. We have several recommendations for improvement. Continue triaging grants, getting them out the door based on student impact and application complexity. Complete the integration of the Michigan's Integrated Continuous Improvement Process with the Grants Process. There needs to be an increase in state funding for the technological systems, NEXUS in particular, and staff to do it. You know, this is not something that is well staffed. And you can't use federal funds very easily to staff these state grants. And partner with organizations like Launch and others, both to help on a steering committee to help design and build improved backend systems and to support technical assistance around different grant programs. So our next steps are to update the Grants Clock regularly and provide information and seek partnership with the Michigan Department of Education to ensure our data accuracy and advocate with the legislature for improvements to the process. That was one thing.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And then, are you providing three minutes as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to hold us to three minutes for both of us. So would you like me to?
No, if you... Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no. I'm just glad to be here today. Appreciate all the work that you do. We're all aligned together to make Michigan one of the top 10 states for education in the country.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move to those in the queue online. Hello caller, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you. If you please mute YouTube in the background, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. And whenever you're ready, if you could state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name's Lisa Panavis and I'm calling from Riverview. And I'm calling because my daughter attended the Riverview School of Cosmetology/CT program. And we were extremely grateful for her to get the opportunity for, to be picked for the program. And we thought it was going to be a huge blessing, but it turned out different. My daughter has wanted to attend the cosmetology program since she was in middle school and she has learning differences in an IEP and a 504. She knew that college wasn't for her and decided on a skilled trade. She was pleased to know that she wasn't, she was able to take the program and she wouldn't have to continue to go to school after high school. But with that all being said, taking the program, I do think that they need to consider how long these instructors are and whether they're teachers, if they know civil rights, if they know the laws of an IEP or a 504, because there was a lot of discrimination going on and it wasn't geared to students who learn differently. And having to fight for the accommodations was really hard on both myself and my daughter. And we had advocates to back us on everything. But instead of the school looking into the issues we were bringing up, they tried to cover it up and they also would defend the instructors. Now, these are instructors who weren't, you know, instructors for years and just got their license right before they were thrown in with a bunch of high school girls. So the training, all of that wasn't there and the girls were not even allowed to cut hair on real people. They could only use, do it on mannequins. They were, the girls who had IEPs were kind of discriminated against because the instructor would say, who needs their IEPs read, you know, their tests read to them? Girls with IEPs get up and get out of, go out of the classroom so someone can read it to you. It was kind of traumatic and embarrassing for the kids with learning disabilities who really need these programs. They don't plan on going to college, so that was their career. That's what they wanted to do. So to not have the support and the backing of the teachers was really hard on them. And some of them dropped out of the program. I've asked the superintendent to please, could they send out questionnaires after the program to the parents and the girls to see how, you know, how they liked the program, what was done in the program. I've also asked how many girls have got their license after the program because I don't believe a lot of them went through with it and had to enroll in a different beauty school after being enrolled in that school. And it's just such a good opportunity and I believe there are things that need to be addressed so that it can be a good opportunity for these girls.
Thank you so much caller for your, for your public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good afternoon. Mike, are there any other persons who have registered for public comment today?
There is nobody else waiting to give a public comment.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. At 111 Board, we are going to do the approval of minutes of regular and committee of the whole meeting of September 10th, 2024. Thank you, Dr. Pritchett, for moving those. Do we have a second? Seeing none, we will, we'll put that, we'll put that vote aside. More shake away from the Lunch Blues Board. Do I have a second for the meeting minutes? Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Any discussion associated therewith? If not, we could do a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the legislative committee meeting of September 26, 2024? Thank you, Chairwoman. Do we have a second? Dr. Robinson has a second. Do we have any discussion associated therewith? Hearing and seeing none, if we could do a roll call vote, please.
Bullock? Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Pass.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Board. At 112, the next item on today's agenda is a presentation on Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, Goal Number Six, to Increase the Percentage of Adults with a Post-Secondary Credential. During this presentation, we will hear how to work in local and regional school districts, MDE and MyLeap, for Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan Goal Six and Michigan's 60 by 30 Goal, to Increase the Percentage of Adults with a Post-Secondary Credential by Providing Opportunities for Students to Earn an Industry Recognized Post-Secondary Credential. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Michelle Harmala, MDE Deputy Superintendent, Educator Excellence, Career and Technical Education, Special Education and Administrative Law; Dr. Beverly Walker-Graffia, Director of Michigan Department of Lifelong Education Advancement and Potential; and Ms. Michelle Richard, Deputy Director of MyLeap over the Office of Higher Education. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome. We appreciate you being with us today.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And in partnership with our colleagues at MyLeap, I am happy to start our presentation. So this presentation focuses on Goal Six of Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, Increase the Percentage of Adults with a Post-Secondary Credential. MDE has a variety of contributions that address Goal Six. As shared in this presentation, some are focused on students and others on educator preparation. The MDE supports a variety of options that support our students in attaining success in high school while also obtaining post-secondary credentials or the knowledge, skills, and abilities that will enhance their future success in obtaining post-secondary credentials. You heard the detailed CTE presentation this morning and Director Selena Mills shared information on the post-secondary credit agreements we have in our state as well as the numerous credential opportunities for our students. The first bullet point on this slide is in reference to 10 newly recognized post-secondary credentials that are specific to the Future Proud Michigan Educator Launch Program that will be highlighted in a few slides and in partnership with MyLeap. Other options include early-middle college, advanced placement classes, the college-level examination program, and student outcome resources that support our students with disabilities who are transitioning to post-secondary activities. As you heard earlier, our CTE enrollments are increasing, as are the numbers of completers. You've seen the early-middle college and advanced placement numbers in previous meetings. The updated numbers for '23, '24 for early-middle college and advanced placement are yet to come. That's largely because students can continue those programs through the summer and then we have data cleanup to do after that. There are contributions related to focusing on educator workforce expansion specific to education and post-secondary credential attainment. The Future Proud Michigan Educator Launch Program is for students who are interested in careers in education or other fields related to children. And this initiative also supports the Governor's 60 by 30 Goal for the state's workforce. Career and technical education facilitates teacher apprenticeships, agreements for post-secondary college credit for students who participate in educationally related programs in high school, and these options set the stage for post-high school career success. Highlighting, oops, jumped ahead, sorry about that. Highlighting the Future Proud Michigan Educator Launch Program, Launch is administered through Michigan CTE programs under the Perkins Grant in partnership with MyLeap. It's specific to early childhood programs as well as out-of-school time programming for students and has been in place for approximately five years. School districts participating in Launch have many of their costs reimbursed through our Perkins Grant. Launch provides resources including standards and competencies, resource guides, professional development for educators, and it offers the opportunity for our CTE students to earn credentials that qualify for entry level employment in early childhood and youth-serving programs. Students in Launch may earn a Child Development Associate, we call that a CDA, that's a credential, or a Michigan School Age Youth Development Associate, MYYDA, and that's another credential. Students take specialized coursework, develop portfolios, and participate in practical and field experiences to develop their skills. Students may also receive college credits toward continuing education and/or a pre-apprenticeship option for a K-12 teacher, early childhood education teacher, and childcare development specialists through an apprenticeship. Program growth for Launch went from 55 programs in 2019-20 to 132 CTE programs in 2023-24. That's 140% increase. Additionally, the early-middle college-related programs went from four programs in 2019-20 to 20 programs in 2023-24. Student enrollment went from 2,230 students in 2019 to 4,146 students in 2023-24. Credential attainment has also increased from two students in the starting year to 295 students in 23-24. The Launch team was intentional in promoting Launch to rural areas of the state who had limited or no access to these programs and have had a hard time with filling some educationally related positions. This particular chart shows four types of high school credentials a student may earn along with the immediate employment options and the careers that are related to those credentials but required continued education. All of these credentials are available through CTE programs. For example, the MYYDA, the Michigan Youth Development Associate, in row two of this particular chart, would allow a student to become immediately eligible to serve as a school district paraeducator or an athletic coach, and the credential would support their eventual education preparation for teaching, counseling, social work, and the like. On this particular slide, we have a few examples of Launch in action around the state. Upper left, Shaiwasi ISD. Upper middle is New Lothrup. Lower middle is Warren Consolidated Schools and the far right is Hillsdale ISD. These represent many wonderful opportunities for our students to prepare for educational credentials within their own schools and communities. For example, the top picture, which is Shaiwasi ISD up on the left, the student is teaching staff how to use a math board game. And while the student in the middle at the bottom from Warren Consolidated Schools, that student is working with middle school age students in a tuba clinic. So Launch is celebrated for the opportunities it gives its students to obtain post-secondary credentials. To share efforts toward those attainment of post-secondary credentials now, I'll hand the rest of the presentation over to my partners at MyLeap.
Thank you so much. I'm Dr. Beverly Walker-Graffia. I am the Director of MyLeap. I started here July 1. In my previous role, I served as the President of Mont Community College in Flint in Genesee County, where I was given the title as I left President Eberettus. My PhD is in child development from Texas Women's University. And I've had a life of really trying to bring equity and success for students. Ever since I was 21 years old and graduated from Oklahoma State University, I knew that all students needed to have the ability to move through a process and to be able to get a college credential or a post-secondary credential because it was necessary, free of barriers and with the resources. And working and talking with my friends at Oklahoma State, you know, at 21, that was my very first job, was joining them, I found there were lots of things happening that I felt shouldn't have been happening. And so I made it, I guess, my life's mission that I wanted to help families, to help others to have the ability to be successful and to meet their dreams. And so I've spent my life in many different states, in many different roles, growing and learning what needs to occur to do that. And so I've just been very happy to join in this role as the Director. And I know that everyone around this table has some sort of belief that we have to work together to ensure that we have everyone in Michigan the opportunity to be successful. We know that our business community is saying that we have to have a talent pool, a prepared talent pool that's ready. And the statistics that I'm going to share with you, you probably already know with the roles that you have, but I want to make sure that I go through them again so that you understand exactly what we're facing here as we work together to move Michigan forward. So when you see this, you see that post-secondary education is highly correlated with lower poverty rates in Michigan. You see from the 26% if you don't have a high school diploma, all the way through to very little poverty if you get that bachelor's degree. When you look at the jobless rates, it does tend to be higher for individuals without that high school diploma or without that GED. And so the labor force participations follows that poverty level that we were just looking at. And you see the numbers here for the jobless rate and then for the labor force participation. And I think as we're all sitting here in the roles that we're participating in, we know that what we want for Michigan is to have as many as we can, to have that credential to get the better jobs that are going to be coming for the future and for the jobs that are here now. And so we know that the state's goal is to have 60% of our residents to have a credential, which is some type of a skill certificate or a degree by 2030. And that's what MyLeap has set as its goal. We met as a department in early September and we said our overall goal is, and that's our overarching goal, is to ensure that we have equity in the advancement, in the education, and, what's the P?
Potential.
Potential for all residents here. And you put that with our name and that's really what we're moving to. We started off in 2019, we're 45% right now, we're at 51.1%. So as we're moving, we've set as a goal that we want to have 54% by 2026, and that's something we did internally, and we want 60% by 2030. And we know it's bold, but we know with the actions that we take together and working together that we can achieve this statistic. And so we wanted to share as we're talking about how we're getting there, how we're making sure that Michigan has that prepared talent for our business leaders. We have a number of things that we wanted to talk about, including, I know that financial aid is heavy on your mind. And so Michelle Richard is here. She is the Deputy Director for the Office of Higher Education, and she will be talking about all the wonderful, awesome things that they're doing.
Thank you so much, Dr. Beverly. As we think about making progress towards that bold goal, we are fortunate as a state to have tremendous tools for students to help them decide whether and where to go to college and to be able to finance that college degree or skill certificate. Last year alone, we were able, as a state, to serve 101,000 college students and help them drive down the cost of college and access state financial aid. The Office of Higher Education administers 14 different scholarship and grant programs that help meet students where they are and connects them with financial aid, again, to lower costs so that they can pursue that skill certificate or degree. For example, we administer the Michigan Reconnect Program, which helps adults 21 and up attend their local community college tuition-free, again, earning that skill certificate or associate degree, or maybe starting their journey towards a bachelor's degree. We also administer the My Future Educator Fellowship, which helps prospective teachers save money on tuition, up to $30,000 over the course of their education, and pays them to become, pays them as their student teaching. We're the only state in the country that offers both of those opportunities for student teachers, such a connection opportunity with the update that Dr. Harmala provided about the work we're doing as a state to train educators. We are also fortunate that, that last year, Governor Whitmer, alongside a bipartisan legislature, created a new Michigan Achievement Scholarship, which helps support recent high school graduates and high school seniors to be able to earn that skill certificate or degree and have a little extra money in their pocket while they do so. Last year, in its very first year of operations, we had 28,800 students participate and we know that there are more students that are eligible. So we want to spend a little time today telling you a little bit more about the Achievement Scholarship. It's one of the things that we're really working on is how can we have more partners helping us get the word out about this incredible opportunity for students. If you're a high school senior or you're a graduate of the class of 23 or class of 24, no matter your education pathway after high school, the Michigan Achievement Scholarship is funding to be able to help you achieve that dream. The Community College Guarantee is available to all high school graduates to be able to help them earn a skill certificate or a degree at their local community college and for lower income students to have a little extra money to help support some of those living expenses that we know are challenges for college students. If you're earning a bachelor's degree at one of our four-year public or private institutions, students can receive $27,500 over five years to help them lower that cost if they income eligible, if they income qualify, and seven in 10 high school graduates do. And if students are pursuing career training at a private training provider, they're eligible to receive up to $4,000 to help do that. Something we're really working towards with the Achievement Scholarship is to make sure that students know that that pathway is available to them. So many students and their families tell us that they dream about earning a bachelor's degree, but they're worried about cost. They're interested in that skill certificate. They know what the benefit is to them, but they're worried about cost. And so I just want to highlight that one of the changes the Governor and the legislature made to the Achievement Scholarship that went into effect this fall is that there is no income requirement at community colleges. So you graduate from a Michigan high school and you enroll in a community college, whether you're in district or out of district, there is no income requirement for you to be able to either access a tuition-free pathway or a significantly discounted pathway to earn that degree. So why does that all matter? It's because when we do the math on 60 by 30, we need more certificates and degrees from every part of our population, including more students enrolling in post-secondary right after high school. But we are seeing some concern, some concerns in the trends that we're seeing over time. What we know is that FAFSA completion, or the free application for federal student aid, that's the first step for many students on their journey to college. While they're trying to decide, can I afford it, when, where, and whether they will go to college, often the first step they take is completing that FAFSA. And what we've really seen is despite some really incredible efforts from public schools, from community organizations to move FAFSA completion, that number has declined slightly and been stagnant over the past several years. Why do we care about that decline? It's because FAFSA completion is one of those early indicators of whether students will be able to go on to college. First, again, we know students are concerned about cost and we know that students are eligible for more federal aid than is coming to Michigan. Students in Michigan are income eligible for almost $100 million in additional federal aid if we can get them to complete that FAFSA. We also know that completing the FAFSA gives students momentum. 90% of students who complete the FAFSA during their senior year continue on to enroll in college the next fall. We also have equity concerns. The data that we shared on the last slide is the full picture, but when we disaggregate that data by socioeconomic... that data by socioeconomic, by socioeconomic status, by race, ethnicity, we see significant disparities. And we care about an inclusive economy for everyone, we have to care about inclusive FAFSA completion. We also have been monitoring college-going rates. Obviously, there are a lot of moments in someone's life when they might pursue a post-secondary education, and here at MyLeap, we're working to support them regardless of the moment in their lifelong education that they choose to go to college. And we know that students who enroll immediately after high school have a lot of wind at their back, which often helps them complete. As recently as the class of 2013, almost 66% of our students were enrolling in college within six months of high school graduation, but for the class of 2023, that dropped to Again, those averages only tell us part of the story. When we continue to disaggregate by race, ethnicity, we see significant variation. Students that identify as African-American, 39%, continue to college right after high school. Students that identify as Hispanic or Latinx, 45%. Students that identify as American Indian or Alaskan Native, 43%. Again, as we think as a department, as we work alongside community partners, business partners, we are thinking about what can we do to not only increase overall college-going, but how can we make sure that we have targeted strategies that meet communities and students where they are? We are delighted to be partnering closely with Dr. Harmala, with Dr. Rice, and to continue partnering with all of you to say, how can we move the needle on Goal Six? How can we move forward on 60 by 30, particularly thinking about our high school seniors? There's three pieces that we're thinking about as a department, and certainly open to continued feedback about where we can and should focus. First is how do we build momentum? Dr. Harmala talked a lot in her presentation about the ways that we are helping, we as a state, are helping students see college as possible, see college as relevant, see them as academically ready to pursue that skill certificate or degree. That work is incredibly important, and it's something that all of us have worked to contribute to support students in saying, it's not just going to community college, that's an incredible decision that you're making for yourself and for your family. We at MyLeap are really focused on how can we continue to lower costs? Again, students and families tell us that cost is one of the most significant barriers that they see, and given some of the significant investments the governor, the legislature has made in recent years, we have more tools than ever to help meet students where they are and make college an affordable opportunity. And finally, we're working with partners all across the state, community partners, business partners, associations, nonprofits, public schools, the list could go on, to continue to change cultures and conversations around college-going. We know that for students to unlock the highest-paying jobs in the economy, for them to have recession-resilient positions, that college or education after high school is a really critical part of that. And we're working to be able to provide better information to students about their concerns and connect them with opportunities that meet their career, their career goals. I want to go back to the Michigan Achievement Scholarship for just a minute because this is such a game-changing investment in our students. We are at MyLeap implementing a marketing campaign that we hope you see here, there, and everywhere, and this is just a small preview of one of the ways that we are trying to make sure that we get the word out. Students should be able to make an informed choice about what comes next, and knowing that there's funding available to support their dreams and their goals is such an important piece of that decision-making puzzle. And so you will see these purply-blue advertisements everywhere you turn, particularly if you are a parent of a high school senior. We are really thinking about how can we target parents and guardians alongside students so that those conversations occur. Again, our 60 by 30 goal is 60, not 100%, so we know that this opportunity isn't for every student, but we want them to make an informed decision about what's next. You'll also see us meeting students in the places where they are, sponsoring events, but also staffing tables so that people can talk to a fellow Michigander about what is available. We're partnering with athletic associations, we're at band competitions, we're at student and community events. I'm sure we have students, or excuse me, staff in the field right now, talking to students about what options are available. We are also trying some creative strategies on first eyes. If you're a high school student, you've probably heard about FAFSA in every place you turn, and we want to give people one more reason to have that conversation. Last year, we had a pleasure of hosting the Reach for the Pie competition, which said, hey, high school seniors, we know your to-do list is long. If you add FAFSA completion to that, you can register for this contest, and you can not only unlock that federal and state financial aid to help lower your cost, but maybe you'll also win free pizza for a year. We had over 7,000 students, take us up on that, and so many of them are chowing down on their pizza right now. But we know the most important part of that is that we also had more students talking to their friends, talking to their neighbors about why completing the FAFSA is so important, and those students got connected with scholarships like Michigan Achievement Scholarship, with grants like the federal Pell Grant, which we know really helped position them for their future. Again, we cannot do this alone. We are sending this digital toolkit to everyone we know, and we'd love to share it with all of you, as well as community leaders and as critical partners in public education, to be able to say, how can we spread the word about this? How do we make sure our high school teachers can tell their students? How do we make it just a little easier? So we have flyers and talking points and social media and all of the things, and we're constantly updating this so that if there's something that's missing, that we add it so that it's easy for you to be a champion for this work. And finally, we could certainly go on, but we wanted to, you're respectful of your time today. What I'll say is we know this is a highly personal decision for students, and that financial aid, college-going can be overwhelming, and we're really delighted to have a customer care center staffed by Michiganders who take questions all day, every day, from high school students, school counselors, families, parents, to say, tell me more about this Achievement Scholarship, when should I complete the FAFSA? If students have questions, we're happy to talk to them anytime. We have a website, if you don't want to call us, we have an email address, and if you want to talk to a person, our 800 number is here, and we're happy to share that far and wide. Dr. Beverley, I'm going to hand it back to you.
Certainly. I think just concluding thoughts, and I think you've heard it from both presentations, we recognize that success for Michigan is our number-one priority, making sure that our students are prepared, no matter if you are in high school but with the Reconnect Program coming back and getting an education, because we know that Michigan needs that to occur, to fill those jobs that are coming in the future and those that are critical right now that needs to be filled. We know that, and you all know that, we don't want the businesses to have to go out to get them in other states. We want to make sure that Michiganders have first choice and have that ability, and working together certainly is how that is done. And so I think you've heard the many different overlaps, I'll say, of how we are partnering and working together and covering the areas so that all know about the importance of education, but that there are resources to help and that barriers can be negated. And so I will end there, and there may be some questions, Dr. Rice, that you may want to ask.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation, Dr. Walker Graffea, Ms. Richard, Dr. Harmala. Board members, questions and comments, recognizing that we treat our visitors with respect. Senator Bullock.
Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Walker Graffea, and company. I got, my first set of questions was about marketing, even though you went through the marketing thing, is like, how's that to be implemented? Is it going to be the same across the entire state? Is there going to be physical presentations at schools, like how they said the CTE, they go to every school and bring everybody into the auditorium? Because just social media is going to be a lot of black holes in that, right? But I hope you got a plan on how to really implement that. My thing is, and this is personal to me about some of it, is we have the Reconnect, but about the Michigan Achievement Scholarship, we got promises throughout the state, certain cities, et cetera. You just talked about Michiganders being first. We always talk about brain drain, kids are leaving the state and going away. My question is, is there a conversation about the kids that we trying to recruit back to the state because there's nothing that incentivizes them to come home? And there are all kinds of scenarios. They went away thinking that box A school was going to be great, they're not happy there, they want to come back home to Western Michigan, Eastern Michigan, but there's nothing to assist them in coming back home. I mean, they got to fill out the FAFSA, but if they were going to get a promise or going to get this Michigan achievement, it's not eligible because they didn't start in the state. So it's their conversations to work that out.
So I'd like to say thank you for that question because that's a good one, and we know that as a community college, former community college president, that a lot of that happens. I think that from our standpoint, we have not done probably any to draw them in from there, but I do know our colleges do have programs that try to make sure that they are getting them in, putting them where they need to be, transferring them, and then moving them where they need to be. As far as the programs, I will look to Deputy Richard to talk about, would you qualify for any of our programs if you left the state or not?
So we've been partnering with MEDC and with Leo because population growth, prosperity, that's the endgame for so many of these programs, is we want to create an inclusive economy, and we want many more people to build their lives right here in Michigan. And so we're continuing to look at, how can we recruit students and bring them back home or bring them to Michigan for the first time? We've made tremendous investments in scholarships, and there are still a few places where we have more to do, this is definitely one of them. I appreciated too your question about how we're using our megaphone. In addition to some of the marketing and outreach that you saw, social media and such, Reach for the Pie, we also have an outreach team who every day goes to Michigan high schools. Our high schools welcome us in, or we knock on their doors, and we know they're really, their time is precious, and we meet with high school students in big groups, one-on-one, to be able to talk more about those opportunities. We know that sitting at one booth or seeing one ad is certainly not enough to change someone's trajectory. We have to create multiple opportunities for people to connect with these programs and with potential opportunities for their future.
And I just want to ask if I may. And so one of the things that I've been doing since I've been a director is really going into the community and talking with nonprofits, with community members that are leaders, trying to educate them about the resources that are available and how to talk with other families about what's available, because we know that a lot of times it's the neighbor or it's the church, or, you know, all those different groups that have to come in to say, this is important. And so we've really been trying to get out there across the state and educate them.
Okay, I'll be watching out for the megaphones.
We'll get you all the material.
As we try to poach, because Michigan's hot, Detroit's hot, other, Grand Rapids is hot, is poaching other folks to come back, where Tecky, where we got manufacturing coming back, but I need them to come on back home to Michigan. And I did it, I want my kids to do it, but there's no incentive other than my pocket. Stay on out there, boy.
That was a lot, more than I had anticipated. Thank you, Senator. Anyone else care to share? Ms. Lipton.
Thank you for the presentation. So the Free College Movement, post-secondary credentialing is really something that's near and dear to my heart. I've been in that space for over a decade now through the Michigan Promise Zone Association, which was the statewide association that I helped to found after I left the legislature. So the first thing would be, I hope that you would lean on the expertise of the Promise Zones in terms of, because we've been doing this work on the ground for, as I said, over 10 years, and we know that scholarships are an important piece of the puzzle, but it's just the first piece of the puzzle. And we have research-backed methods in terms of not what is just needed for college access, but if you disaggregate college access from persistence, there are certain things that, investments that need to be made to make sure that the student who goes to college, completes the FAFSA, and gets accepted, actually gets on campus and some period of time later actually ends up with a credential, because the population that we serve do not make a straight line through the process. And we have to be mindful that we're, we want to get them to degree completion and persistence. And there's a lot of steps along the way, that, a lot of hard lessons that we've learned in our 15 zones that are in the most economically distressed communities throughout the state. We have been successful. Our college persistence rates exceed the state's average, and I say that because we've been doing it for a long enough time that we know what works. The second point that I wanted to make is that as you're beginning to structure how you look at this space, I do think that Michigan is somewhat unique in the sense that we have, we don't have a unified system or oversight over our higher ed's. We do have constitutional autonomy, and oftentimes, some of the biggest challenges that we in the zone space is getting continuous cooperation from our higher ed's. We don't have a singular way of delivering a financial aid letter to our students. So I know that that seems perhaps something obvious, but it's not. When you're trying to counsel a student on what scholarship system is best for them, to not have our own state universities operating from a single financial aid letter can be a challenge. So it's food for thought, but it's an important enough space that it would be wonderful if Michigan could lead on this, as some other states have led in the Free College Movement. And I hope that we'll get there sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Kuzmaño.
First of all, thank you for this presentation because I know something about it, being a high school teacher, but I'm not a guidance counselor. So the first thing, I think to echo, I cannot remember who said it at this table earlier, but it's hard for even counselors to remember all these things or to connect with all these things, so I do want to encourage, you know, obviously, we need to think about that, and already all the things they have to talk to kids about. But I also would encourage you to partner with teachers, you know, I guess I didn't really hear a lot of that. The one, the one thing I know from anecdotal experience or just being in a high school space is the FAFSA is hard. And the, last year, like, there was so much controversy about filling it out, and I think that's, that's like the be-all and-end-all for why we're stagnating. It's a not very nice system. And so I just really think the more messaging, I mean, there is that, that line, I think that you talked about, that we're here to help, but I think that just seems so intimidating to both kids and their families, that that is a huge hindrance, and they'd rather be like, let's just forget it. So I just think that's a couple of things to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzmaño. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you again. This is a lot of good information for us to chew on. I noticed a lot of emphasis on FAFSA in your report. And what I'm wondering is, if we want more students to apply for, especially Michigan-centric college tuition assistance, funding, et cetera, why, why not make FAFSA not a requirement? I mean, we're hearing that it's onerous for a lot of families, it's difficult to do. Six states have it as a graduation requirement out of 51 territory states. And I'm looking at the completion rates, and the highest completion rates in the country are from states that are, that do not require FAFSA as graduation requirement. Our completion rate is only a point away from about three of the six that do require it, and the states that are having the most success are building capacity for parents and kids to fill out the FAFSA forms and encouraging FAFSA completion rather than requiring it. So I'm just wondering if we didn't tie our horse, so to speak, to FAFSA, but instead built counselor capacity, hired more counselors, empowered more, had more people that were willing to help families fill out the forms, would we not reach our goal in a more elegant way, in a smarter way?
I think that's something that we can really look at and look at the research that you've looked at and to see if that's a possibility.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Other reflections? Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Director Walker Graffea. Respectively, respectfully.
Respectively, respectfully, I'd like to just ask some of the functions you, or the functions you mentioned either have been removed from MDE or could be done at MDE. So, can you give me a reason why it would be better, those functions to be done outside of MDE at MyLeap as opposed to here at MDE?
Actually, I'm not going to be able to share that. I know with me and what we're doing is, we're just trying to be intentional with ensuring that we are negating those barriers, eliminating those resources, and just trying to be very, very intentional with working with the communities around us that they have what they need to move forward. I know that decisions were made before I got here and I know that there may have been some dissension about it. But I also know that we have been working together very closely to ensure that Michiganders, in every realm, actually, to ensure that Michiganders have what they need in order to move forward, in order to know what's out there and in order to get those resources very quickly and intentionally. And so, that's really what, as the director, I've been focusing my team on and ensuring that we are working together to get that done.
I appreciate that. I think it's fair and I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just, I don't see any reason why any of the functions being done there required a second Department of Education to be created. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Anyone else? Dr. Pritchett, Ms. Tilly, Dr. Pugh?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I'm going to kind of echo what you've already heard. I was a high school principal back a few years ago and the same concerns about FAFSA I heard then, I hear now. Not only in my role, but as I work throughout the community. I also was part of an ISD who every year would provide workshops for parents to help them complete that form. And there is so much misunderstanding out there about it. You're nosing in my personal family business because obviously you have to put down some income information and other things. And then last year, you know, we sit here and point fingers, but it did not go well. Didn't go well across the country. And I hope that they, you know, have smoothed some of that out. But that's going to be a barrier at this point. So, I think we need to realize that and possibly have some actions ready to start. But you're always going to have, Kelly's right, you're always going to have those individuals out there who are going to say, this isn't any of your business. Even though we know at the other end, this is, this will help. This will help provide opportunities for your student. So, that's FAFSA. The free community college education, great idea, totally support it. I do worry about if we had one of those Michigan maps here, we would have deserts of community colleges also. And obviously, you know that, that there's certain areas in the state of Michigan where students do not have access to community colleges. So, I think that's just another challenge we're all facing. Whether we do it virtually or whatever, that we're ready to step up to that challenge also because those students deserve to have that access. How do we get that access to them equitably? So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Tilly?
I want to thank you all for the presentation. Thank you, ladies, for coming. It definitely has been a rough road in transition. And I appreciate you coming with the mind of partnership and wanting to build a bridge. I want to piggyback on the FAFSA piece. It definitely is complex for students to fill out. However, one of the issues that I've heard from students over the years in the urban area, they don't, they don't want the debt. So, they don't want to fill out FAFSA. There are a lot of issues with students getting college debt, up to six figures in college debt at a very young age. And then, you know, that goes on your credit, that affects you, your buying power for purchasing a home. And we're kind of, you know, we've been sold over the years, this American dream, which you gave the data of those who can get jobs and have better incomes. However, if you can't do what you need to do or want to do with that income because you have so much debt, then it's deterring students from wanting to go to college. So, that is a big issue you have. So, how can we offset the cost of college in Michigan? I know we are doing that with community colleges, but on the university level, the four-year college degree level, the master's degree level, how can we work with universities to make sure, ensure that, especially our public universities, that college is affordable and there are opportunities for everybody to attend? I know that I help with raising funds for scholarships for foster youth. How can we make sure that all of our students have opportunities with scholarships? So, what are we doing to move in those directions to accompany filling out the FAFSA? Because that's just one small portion of it.
Sure. I really love those old Buick commercials where the person walks out of the place and they walk right past the Buick and they say, like, have you checked out a Buick lately? Because your perception of what a Buick is and what it actually is different. We've been trying to get students and families to take a second look at the FAFSA in the same way. There's a lot of misconceptions about how challenging it is, about the rollout from last year. And we're working to do some myth busting to make sure that they take that first step to really unlock so many of the federal and state aid that you, that you mentioned. Michigan Achievement Scholarship, if you qualify, which again, seven in 10 high school graduates do, you can have a scholarship that's valued over $27,000 over the course of your bachelor's degree. That's a significant investment in our students to earn that, to earn that BA. And we want to continue to support them in doing that. And that's on top of things like fostering futures, which has targeted investments in students who we know have had a very challenging path to college, more challenging than most. It's on top of investments like the Tuition Incentive Program. That's again, trying to lower costs for our lowest-income students. What we're trying to do is be able to say, how can we package that aid? And we're seeing institutions really tackle that challenge head-on. I think about places like Wayne State, who 59% of their students, their first-year students are on campus tuition-free as first-year full-time students. That's amazing. And to see the university champion that, we have so many universities all across the state who are making similar investments so that we can show students that there is a path to college that doesn't have a debt load that they maybe think there might be and that our state is really shoulder-to-shoulder with them in that because we want to make investments in our, in our young people or in people at every stage of their career so that they build their lives and their careers right here in Michigan.
So, I think that it's important to, again, back to that marketing piece, expanding that marketing program for not only high school students, but adults that want to return to college or go to college for the first time. Because you have a lot of people in their twenties, thirties that want to get a degree and beyond, of course. The CTE, I mean, the, not CTE, ECE program. Of course, the program was award-winning. Want to know what expansions have you made? One of my concerns is as we focus on growing, which I'm in favor of, growing the program, I think that every child definitely deserves to have the opportunity to attend ECE. But I do believe in controlled growth. So, one of my concerns has been as we're growing quickly, making sure that the program is still, I don't want to say viable, but that the program still has the same offerings or, you know, that it's still a great program, that we're not taking away from it as we're building capacity. So, what are you all doing for controlled growth and to help?
I think that it would be better, instead of me trying to answer that question during the Office of Higher Education, there is a person that's just like Michelle that does that. And maybe if Dr. Rice would allow.
Yeah, I think to that, to that point, Dr. Walker Graffia, that's a separate presentation. That's a Goal One presentation. We welcome them back. That's why I asked you to be on your best behavior board so they would come back and do a Goal One presentation. So, I'm glad that Dr. Walker Graffia has already said that she's interested in coming back and doing a Goal One presentation.
Yes, that's fine. Or we could submit something in writing, either one, whatever you'd like to say, so.
Thank you. We'd prefer you come back. We think it's an important area. One of the eight goals of the Top 10 Strategic Education Plan.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Pugh and then Senator Bullock for a second bite of the apple.
Thank you all for coming and for the presentation. I'm looking at Slide 15 and 16 and just wondering, and it's the certificate or the degree that we, and congratulations on the 6.1% percentage point increase. Are those mainly certificates or degrees? Do we know? Right there.
Right here.
Oh, I think that any of those would be fine. We are not trying to pigeonhole any type of credential. We just know that it's better if you get something in hand, that's a certificate or a degree.
Okay. Okay. And then to the last points that were just made and definitely still hope that you all come back. First of all, you know, it's been 12 months since the department has, has propped up. I do have to say, and this isn't always the case, but I do agree with Board Member McMillan. And this is nothing new to you, Dr. Walker Graffia. You and I have had the conversations that I don't understand the, yet to understand why a second education department exists. Definitely the work that you are doing. And I know you, I know your work. I've known you since you got here, came to Michigan and definitely know what your motivation is and that you definitely have the best interests of students in mind. But definitely wanted to mention that. And you've only been in the role for three months, so thank you for coming. And you have reached out to us. I want to appreciate that as well. I'm looking at Slide 27 and this is where we talked about, I think this is where we talked about partnership with the department. And this is a question that I ask, like, every meeting since MyLeap has been in existence. And I think that that's where you were saying that we're partnering together with MyLeap. And my question to Dr. Rice always is, you know, we're in a new fiscal year. What, how is the department's resources being, supporting MyLeap's existence? That's a question that I have every meeting, so I think this is the appropriate time to ask that question.
Do you care to respond?
I know that Dr. Rice and I have worked with our teams as far as how we're working together and really moving forward for the best of Michigan. And so, we've had many, many different meetings in doing that. And I think we've been really partnering together very well, trying to ensure that as we transition, that it's good for everyone involved.
And because we all, our goals are children, students, then I do, I do want us to partner. My concern always becomes, are we responsible for the new department? And are we using our scarce and precious resources? I know one of the things that we rattle off, Dr. Rice, you in particular, that we have 25% of the responsibility and only, what, 2% of the budget? So, I probably messed that, those statistics up.
We're responsible for 25% of the budget with 1% of the FTEs in the state, in state government. That's right.
And with those precious resources, are we still supporting MyLeap in any way in that partnership? Again, appreciate the partnership, but is it coming at a cost and drawing from our precious resources that are scarce?
Right. So, we do continue to support MyLeap in certain ways. One hopes that that will taper off over a period of months.
Again, thank you. And we still hope to see you again.
Other questions for, for board members? From board members, Senator Bullock?
Like you, I'm the, I'm the new guy on the All-Star team.
Okay, alright.
Want you to come back.
Thank you.
But I do have angst. And we can talk about it in depth between here and now and then the group coming back. But so, I'm, most of my thing is not only what I read and I see and I hear, I lived experiences. So, I got three college students right now, right? So, yesterday's FAFSA and today's FAFSA. Thumbs down on both. But when, like, I'm a marketing guy and I'm numbers, so like, and I worked in city government. So, I'll do this first. Like, affordable housing is relative. I work hard on low-income housing because people in my median or in my, I sir, can't afford affordable. So, when we talk about the tuition and the $2,700 over four years, if the average cost of the average school in Michigan, Fair State, Eastern, Western, is $30,000 and I go there four or five years, it basically pays for one year. Because, and at the end of the day, even if you're on a low income, because I grew up on public assistance, even with the Pell Grant, my mother couldn't, we couldn't afford the other things, right? So, even if I got to take out that loan for that extra $4,000, $6,000, $8,000, $10,000 a year, I'm still trapped in what, remember Tilly was saying is, there's a, there's, there's a, there's a, there's, there's a cycle of, that keeps me in debt. And so, I just want us to have a real conversation about that, not challenging or, yeah. Because to say one thing, it sound good, but the reality is I'm still going to be in a hole if I make it through these four or five years. And now, you know, and then what it costs to go to school doesn't match the salary that I'm going to get at that point, you know? And are we locking in the salary, like, the tuition? So, if I get the grant, get the scholarship this year and school's only $30,000 and universities decide they go on to $40,000, am I locked in at $30,000 for the time I'm in school? Or does that compound? What I get, you know, you understand? I'm a numbers guy.
Okay.
But we'll talk about it at the next.
So, we're going to be real, right? Okay. So, remember, I was the president for 10 years at my community college in Flint. And so, I know the students that you're talking about. I know the families that you're talking about. And I understand all of the parameters that go into just getting them across the door to come to college and the support services they need and the childcare and the transportation on the bus with the kids and all of the different things that goes along to get all students a credential. And so, knowing that, when you look at the money that has been coming out, I will say it is a good time to be a Michigander. I've been saying this, I have, I used to have a radio program in Flint that, you know, I would talk to the community about coming to college because what we're doing is trying to piece all of these different types of funds together to make it so you can make it and so that you can use extra funds for that childcare, that transportation. that transportation, the food, you know, all those different things that go into not having you to be with us. But there's a lot more that we can do in Michigan. And the one thing that I keep talking about is that Michigan is about innovation and entrepreneurship. And we should be able to think ourselves out of this without bounds to figure out what we need to do to support so these things are equitable for all. And as we are doing this, we have to be able to throw everything on the table and to really see what's going to make sense so that everyone comes out with that credential that we need for them to get. Because it's too easy when you are that person you were talking about, when you're talking about the housing. Well, see, my folks don't have housing. I'm one of the colleges that had, you know, a high percentage across the nation that are homeless that are attending. And so knowing that, it means that we have to come together and figure out, well, how are we going to get them homes? Some kind of shelter so that they can not have to worry about with them and their children. So it's just all these different things that I think that as Michelle is leading this effort, that we have to be able to come to the table and be real with each other and really talk about what are the efforts we need to do together to ensure that all Michiganders have this opportunity. It's not gonna be easy, but it's something that I think that we can do if we work together.
And I appreciate your response, and it's first steps, it's baby steps and steps, but yeah.
Definitely. So I hear you fully.
Thank you, Senator. Any other first bites? Ms. Snyder for a first bite, and then Ms. Tilly for a second.
I just heard your question, and he said, would it be locked in, were you meaning tuition after? Like, if you get into that program, they gave you the 27.5, you're saying tuition for the rest of the four years total?
So it's a discussion to be had if, if going to Western Michigan for a year's tuition is 30,000 when I become a student.
Yeah.
And we have discussions with the universities about locking in the tuition while I'm there. Because if the tuition goes up two years from now, it compounds what I'm, my scenario.
Understood. And I, like, that was, I would want to make sure I understood because I may not be in that group of students that you guys were talking about. But I was one of the first students in my family to graduate from college. And it was very interesting. I had two options. One, one was the more expensive at the time, right? It was an articulation agreement with University of Michigan that I would have graduated with about $16,000 worth of debt. Then I went to Eastern instead and ended up graduating with $34,000 of debt because it wasn't locked in and that tuition just kept going up. And then because I had a child with a cleft lip and then a child with one arm and a lot going on, the income did not match the student loan and it turned into a $54,000 loan with interest. So the reality here is that discussion is extremely important. And not that you weren't, you were trying not to answer it, but that's something I would definitely want.
I understood everything she said.
Okay, good. But I want to hear, I want to hear like that discussion played out in real time, like what we intend to do for students so that when they start going to school, yes, they don't graduate with. Because if I, if I could go back knowing what was gonna happen three years from when I went to Eastern versus U of M, of course I would have chosen U of M. I didn't because I was trying to make a financially responsible decision with how much debt I carried. And so students can't, when they, when they apply for the FAFSA and they take on that debt and then they don't know the, the fiscal reality of the university or the college that they just chose. And they're really not, you're not required to disclose that to them. They don't know the numbers and then before you know it, they graduate, you start down this pathway. You graduate with, with that heavy burden on your back that you gotta carry for the system. And I don't think that's fair at all. So.
I agree.
I would love to hear more about that particular discussion.
Your tuition probably went up too, so you still might have been in a.
Well, no, because it was with the Michigan nurses. It was a whole equation in both pathways and I calculated the crap out of it towards the end even. So like, no, the truth is it was not, it's not fair what we do to students. They need to have a fiscal transparency to their choices and their pathways and be able to rely on it because it will make a very big difference in not just what they're going through to get through it, but what they could potentially face when they get out of it, which was something I never also could have considered in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. I, I don't, do, do we, do we get both of you in, in that regard?
They did, and we, oh my goodness!
I'm just checking. I just want to make 100% sure that we covered everybody. You, you good?
I'm great.
Good, okay, thank you very much.
I want them to come back.
I believe that. Any, anybody else on the board want to share? Okay. Ms. Tilly?
Continuing the conversation. The, even when students do get those scholarships, they still, depending on the college, get a whole bunch of debt from housing, from staying on campus, staying in the dorms. So that is something else we need to look at. How can we support them with that and with books, of course? And to Dr. Pugh's point, I just want to take a moment to thank the staff, MDE staff, because I know some of them are probably working two or three jobs here, playing two or three different roles. So I just want to thank them for the hard work that they do to support the department and to support our students in Michigan. And there are, there are other places that they could probably be with their wealth of knowledge. And even though they're overburdened, they, they continue to be loyal to the department and to work hard for students. So I really, really want to say thank you to the staff for all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. So to our presenters, there's been a big increase in the availability of funds for, for young people to go to school in Michigan, without a doubt, huge increase. And that's noteworthy and important, necessary, not sufficient, as you well know. It, it's not like Build a Freedom. It's not build it and they will come. It's more complicated than that. Some of it is about affordability. Some of it is about available dollars. Some of it is about FAFSA completion by extension. Some of it is about public awareness. But some of it is more granular. And I think we need collectively to reflect upon the, the more granular because a, a public service announcement doesn't necessarily pick me up. I may see it, I may not. I may take it in as relevant to me, I may not. To Dr. Robinson's point about counselors, we have a paucity of counselors in the, in the state. The drumbeat has to be not simply broad, but it needs to be narrow. It needs to be specific. It needs to be eye level. So we've got to make this campaign one that includes teachers, counselors, administrators, other trusted elders that are in space with our kids. Because at the end of the day, the children and their parents, particularly the kids, are gonna have to pull the trigger on or not decisions about higher education. And so everything that you've talked about is necessary, without a doubt, but not quite sufficient. And so counselors, counselor numbers, counselor knowledge, teacher knowledge, administrator knowledge, the ability to get in space with kids and mentor them. That's not gonna be done here. It's gotta be done here. And so there's a whole driving up of a learning curve that's necessary. We look forward to working with you in that regard. We would be happy to do that. Yeah, okay. Anything more for the good of the group, once, twice, thrice? We thank you very much. We welcome you back in December to talk about goal number one. Board, it's 2:21, and at this time, we're going to pivot to the next item on today's agenda, a presentation on student attendance, chronic absenteeism and student attendance supports. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent in the Office of the Superintendent, and Tom Howell, the Director of the Center for Educational Performance and Information. Also joining us in the room today, Mr. Mel Atkins, the Executive Director of Community and Student Affairs in Grand Rapids Public Schools. Welcome. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. However, we may administer a brief test at the, at the end. Mr. Howell will administer that test. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good afternoon, Board. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you on student attendance, chronic absenteeism, and student supports. As an overview, our focus today includes the sharing of attendance data trends specific to statewide rates and chronic absenteeism overall, and then by student groups. Additionally, we will share student supports and our next steps. And now to Executive Director Tom Howell, my colleague, to highlight our attendance data trends.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Good afternoon, Board members. Dr. Rice, thank you for inviting me. Special thanks to Mike Magrodi, the Director of the Office of Analytics and Reporting, and to Lauren Pluta, our Manager of Long-Term Data System Staff, for today's presentation and slides. So the minds and the power behind what I'm gonna talk about today, and I'm always appreciative of the staff and the great work that they do. So we're gonna keep it brief. Well, no, we're not. We're gonna go deep, but I'll try to be efficient. We're gonna first talk about attendance overall and then by subgroup, and then the prevalence of chronic absenteeism in our state overall and again by subgroup. So let's get right at it. First, we need to take a look at a couple definitions. The federal definition would indicate that students are in attendance if they're attending class at least half the time. Some might argue that bar's too low. Others might argue too high, but that is the federal definition and that's how we compute the rates. We include any student that is there for at least 10 enrolled days at the state, district, and school level. There are a few exclusions. And the attendance rate is calculated as the total days that a student attends school out of the total days possible for all students. So it's pretty straightforward. All right, let's go ahead and proceed. So cutting right to the chase, statewide attendance rate for school year 23, 24 was 90.8%. That was a 0.3% increase, not as great as in the prior year, but still an increase. While rates continued to improve, we still trail the pre-pandemic average of about 93% in our state. The lowest attendance was among homeless students at 82.8%. There's still a sizable gap between students that are homeless and students who are not. Couple little tidbits that are not on that slide. 12th grade is the only grade that saw a decline this year in attendance rates from 88.3% to 88.2%, small decrease. And then kindergarten saw the best year-over-year increase of 0.6% to 90.5%. So kindergarten, the younger kids, the ones that I think are difficult to get parents trained, we saw the biggest improvement this year. So that was a good thing. All right. So statewide attendance rate was 90.8, as we just mentioned. This marks the second year of improvement in a row, bringing Michigan nearly halfway back from pre-pandemic average of about 93%. So the drops that we saw during the pandemic, we have rebounded about half, about 50% of the way back. This is, the average is based on the years preceding, school year 22, where the rate hovered at 93%. We can look forward. As in past years, we'll review attendance data through the lens of economic status, English learner status, homeless, special ed, race, ethnicity, and foster care. These are the student groups that the United States Department of Education requires under ESSA, IDEA, and Perkins. So it's important for all education programming, preschool through 12th grade. So the first group, for students who are economically disadvantaged, the overall attendance rate improved by 0.4% to 88.5%. The gap between the economically disadvantaged students and their non-economically disadvantaged peers narrowed slightly. So at 5.1%, the gap remains wider than prior to the pandemic. So just for your reference, in the three years prior to school year 21, the gap was between 3.9 and 4.4%. So we're still a little bit above that at 5.1% gap between economically disadvantaged and not economically disadvantaged students. The attendance rate among English learners held steady at 90.5%. And while that of the non-English learners improved by 0.3 percentage points. That difference is slight, but this is the first time in about 10 years where English learners' attendance rate has actually been lower than that of their peers. So they've been a strong performer. This year, they, their last school year, they stumbled just ever so slightly. The attendance rate for students who were homeless during the school year improved by 0.4% last year to 82.8%. Compared to 21, 22, the gap has narrowed. But at 8.2%, it remains higher than the gaps that we saw prior to the pandemic, which hovered around 6.6% to 7%. So that 8.2% gap between groups is something we still need to take a look at. The attendance rate of our special ed population, our students with disabilities, improved by 0.4 percentage points to 88.8%. Students without disabilities improved a little bit less, so that narrowed the gap between these two groups. It's about 2.3% difference between the, between the groups. All right, patterns of race and ethnicity have been relatively consistent over time. That continued this year as well, or this past school year as well. Nearly all groups saw minor improvements. The only exception were Asian students whose attendance remained steady from school year 23 to school year 24, and they still perform from an attendance perspective higher than all other racial, ethnic categories. All right, the last quick attendance breakdown, foster care students were added this year. And that came on the heels of questions from this group last year about foster care students and the supports that the department continues to provide to service that vulnerable set of students. In 2023, 24, foster care students' attendance rate was 87.2% or 3.6% lower than students who were never in foster care. So as with other groups we've looked at, the rate reflects two years of improvement and a little bit more substantial improvement happening in the prior school year, but still improvement as well. Now, this is a little bit lesser-known measure. It's a statewide chronic absenteeism measure. We're gonna talk about that today. This is the actual measure that goes to the US Department of Education. So although they are interested in attendance, they really are interested in chronic absenteeism. All right, so we're gonna talk about a definition real quick. Students are considered chronically absent if they miss 10% or more of their possible days. Again, students have to be enrolled at the state, the district, or school for 10 days in order to be included in the metrics. Students that are not there for at least that amount of time are excluded from this particular measure. Chronic absenteeism in Michigan dropped 1.3 percentage points to 29.5% during school year 23, 24. This is the second year of improvement in a row. Just to remind you again, this is students who miss 10% or more of their possible days. Under this definition, there's very small margins that shift you between attendance or chronic absenteeism. A, a single day can make a difference. A student who attends like 163 days out of 180 is not chronically absent. But a student who attends only 162, one difference in days, is chronically absent, okay? So in this scenario, a student who attended 162 is in that 29.5% of students who are chronically absent. Any that attended at least 163 or more would fall into roughly 70% of students who are not chronically absent. Now, this one's a little bit of an eye chart. It's statewide attendance rate ranges. Again, sticking to that same theme, sorry, Dr. Rice, I don't want us to fixate on the table. The table really is, is telling you there are nuances in the data. It is not all bad news. We have a lot of students in the greater than 90%. It is not where it was pre-pandemic. It currently sits at 70%. But we do see some shifts happening within the data. They are not necessarily a predictor of the future, but they do give us a little glimmer of what's happening. You see a little bit of grouping in that 80, 80 to 90% range from school years 22, 23, and 24. Um, you see a little bit of grouping in that 80, 80 to 90% range, uh, from school years 22, 23, and 24. Um, that, those numbers tend to be creeping up, which is good. Attendance is moving toward the 90% range. That's a positive thing. Sorry, Dr. Rice, did you have a question in there?
No, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just monkeying out.
Okay. So there's, there's a lot of shifting, and I don't want, I don't want us to fixate too much on the patterns in the numbers other than we are seeing them move again up, which is a positive thing. All right, we'll keep moving. All right, so let's get into the student data subgroups as well. So chronic absenteeism for economically disadvantaged student status, um, dropped both for economically disadvantaged and not economically disadvantaged peers, with the gap narrowing slightly, but again, not quite to pre-pandemic levels. So the economically disadvantaged students were seeing a 40.1% chronic absenteeism challenge. And not economically disadvantaged students were seeing about a 16.1% challenge. Okay, the difference in chronic absenteeism for English learners versus non-English learners is also quite small, uh, with both groups improving. Uh, each group in the past two years saw improvement. Uh, chronic absenteeism has been lower and improved slightly more, uh, among non-English learners, coming in this year at 32%. And looking at the same measure by, for homeless students is, uh, they're consistently the highest among some group, subgroups that we consider. Uh, despite their modest improvement in attendance rates, uh, the students who are chronically absent increased slightly to 60.2% during school year 24. Okay, so again, we saw their attendance rate improve, but the chronic absenteeism rate, so for, for a fair number of their students, of homeless students, they are still experiencing a bit more chronic attendance, uh, patterns or problems, um, according to the data. All right, chronic absenteeism for students with disabilities is consistently higher than other students by about, an average of about 10 percentage points. Uh, that's narrowed slightly over the past couple of years. So this year, they came in at 37.6%. Students without disabilities came in at 28.1% chronic absenteeism. That's a gap of about 9.5%. Uh, we did see, uh, improvements for the special ed community of 10.2 points over the last two years, and 8.9 points, uh, for the students without disabilities. So that gap is starting to narrow between those two groups. Again, looking at chronic absenteeism by race, ethnicity, um, patterns are fairly consistent with what you saw in attendance rates. African-American students are the second-largest group, um, by race, ethnicity, at about 18% of our student attendance or student enrollment statewide. Uh, this group has the highest chronic absenteeism rate by race and ethnicity at 51.6% during the 2324 school year. And while the chronic absenteeism rate for this group improved by 1.4% from the 2223 year, it's still above the pre-pandemic rate for this group by about 14 points. So their rate prior to pandemic for this group was still higher than all, all of the race ethnicities at 37.6%. We're seeing them currently at 51.6. Um, so that's an area we want to continue to focus. And this brings us to our last student group, our foster care students. 44% of students in foster care were chronically absent in school year 2324. That's an improvement compared to both 2122 and 2223. Chronic absenteeism among students who were never in foster care have improved a bit faster. As a result, the 14.5% gap in 202324 is wider than the gaps that we've seen in the prior years. So it's something we want to keep an eye on. All right, um, the metric on this, this last, you know, weedy number slide really tries to take a, a look at attendance rate and chronic absenteeism together. Um, it's not all that surprising. At 29.5% of students who are chronically absent in 2324, depicted by the solid line in the middle, um, what, what, what you would expect, the students who are chronically absent have a lower-than-overall attendance rate of 78.8%. And that's depicted there by the dashed line, um, you see at, at the bottom of the three lines. And then those who are not chronically absent hover slightly above at a, a attendance rate of 95.6%. So when you're thinking about your chronically absent students, this is kind of a differentiation or a play on what we're seeing, uh, in terms of their participation in the education system. All right, so just a quick summary again, attendance rate increased to 90.8%. Uh, that's still below attendance rates prior to the pandemic, but continuing to improve. Uh, the percentage of students who are chronically absent decreased by 1.3 percentage points to 29.5%. Um, and we're continuing to see increases year, year-over-year. So this is positive movement, uh, from a data perspective. Uh, and with that, I'll get out of the way and, and, and hand this back over to Dr. Chapman.
Thanks, Tom. The balance of the presentation today will share MDE's historical efforts to support attendance and engagement, our, our being MDE, our expanded learning, current local efforts, and our next steps to support the field with research and evidence-based strategies to promote improved attendance yet this school year and for the future. You'll see here on the screen our historical efforts, which include MYMTSS, which is Michigan's Multi-Tierred System of Supports, and EWIMS, Early Warning Intervention and Monitoring Systems. Attendance Works as well has become a national project initiative that utilizes action research methodology to assist school districts across the nation in addressing the prevalence of chronic absenteeism. As a nonprofit initiative, Attendance Works collaborates with schools, districts, states, communities, and organizations to ensure that everyone recognizes that chronic absence is a serious issue that can be addressed using a positive problem-solving approach grounded in an understanding of edu- educational inequities. In the upcoming slides, we will review each of these efforts and intended outcomes separately. So let's first take a look at MYMTSS. Michigan's Multi-Tierred System of Supports is a responsive framework that provides research-based instruction, interventions, and supports intended to meet the needs and assets of the whole child. The five essential components of MTSS are team-based, leadership, tiered delivery system, selection and implementation of instruction, interventions and supports, comprehensive screening and assessment system, and continuous data-based decision-making. Implementation of the five essential components of MTSS, as intended, provides educational settings with a framework to organize the strategies and processes needed to eliminate barriers to learning and support successful student outcomes, including attendance and behavior. It is important to note that Michigan's Multi-Tierred System of Supports Technical Assistance Center is a state and federally funded project of MDE's that helps intermediate and our local school districts implement and sustain a multi-tiered system of support in their schools to improve student outcomes in, yes, both behavior and learning. Taking a closer look here now at EWIMS, or Early Warning Intervention and Monitoring Systems, as a part of a secondary school's multi-tiered system of supports framework, the Early Warning Intervention and Monitoring System can help educators systematically identify students who are showing signs that they are at risk of dropping out of school and make decisions about supports and interventions to help students stay on track for graduation. At Tier One Schools, schools implement evidence-based practices to support attendance, positive social, emotional, and behavioral well-being, and high course performance for all learners. Utilizing EWIMS within the MTSS framework allows us to work closely with the national partner, Attendance Works. Through the support of Attendance Works and the Student Engagement and Attendance Center, MDE has learned specific strategies and interventions to support improved attendance of students. For example, Tier One strategies are aimed at encouraging better attendance for all students and at preventing absenteeism before it affects achievement. Some of the examples that would include would be clear, concise, and consistent communication about schedules, expectations, routines, rituals, and even celebrations in the classroom that encourage attendance and engage our learners. Regarding Tier Two, these are interventions designed to remove barriers to attendance for students at greater risk of chronic absenteeism. These students and families receive a more personalized attention as part of the engagement strategy within the school and beyond. And then finally, Tier Three Supports, these are very intensive support measures for students who are missing the most school. And it is here where the community and external organizations partner with the schools to provide assistance in breaking the barriers such as those that are caused by health, housing, and any other social services or incidents that would impair regular attendance by the students. And now, let's take a close look at what we've done internally here at MDE. We shared in the overview that we would discuss briefly our expanded learning as the state education agency and having a responsibility to make sure that we are providing support and guidance on student attendance and engagement. As such, over the past 24 months, MDE has participated in a federal community of practice led by the U.S. Ed Office of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Student Engagement and Attendance Center, or known as CAC. Through virtual learning series, state education agencies focused on strategies to address the many facets of chronic absenteeism. As you can see here on the screen, in February of 2022, I'm sorry, in February through September of 2022, the focus was on building systemic supports for better attendance. This particular series reminded us of the importance of three, three specific elements of how to either support or address. These three primary topics included multi-tiered systems of support, youth and family engagement, and taking a very close look at addressing truancy. The second series focused on recognizing underserved populations to support attendance and engagement. And then finally, the third series focused on overcoming data challenges to address chronic absenteeism. Moving into March of 2024, the next series focused on proactive school-wide strategies for supporting attendance. As such, we have been successful as we began to extend our learning further and participated in a collaboration which convened April of 2024 and just concluded last month, September of 2024. This series leveraged an opportunity for a systems-level approach to address chronic absenteeism. Through this commitment, we are glad to report, Board, as we shared with you as a next step during this presentation on last year, that we have been successful in convening a 10-member team that is representative as the MDE Attendance Team. This team was formed with representatives from the Office of the Superintendent, the Office of Health and Nutrition Services, the MYMTSS TA Center, SEPI, thank you, Tom, for having your staff participate, and the Region Eight Comprehensive Center. Um, some of the, the most important efforts that we've seen so far that's coming out of the team will be shared in the upcoming slide. Through this team and through the expanded learning, we have learned that absenteeism is a leading indicator and cause of educational inequity. Michigan is aligned to the research as it defines chronic absenteeism, and our efforts, as shared today through the data, will continue moving forward as we break barriers and provide support to the field. And now, quickly, we will share just on some of our local efforts. We are excited to report, in reference as we shared earlier about EWIMS, these next two slides give an active account of the impact or the effects of having implemented EWIMS. There are 154 districts throughout the state that have successfully and fully implemented EWIMS. The attendance data for the 2324 school year were compared with 23, 2223 data. From SEPI, we were able to glean the following. 96 districts showed an increase in attendance rate for those that have successfully implemented EWIMS. 100 districts showed an improvement in chronically absent, or chronic absenteeism. And 84 districts showed improvement in both their attendance rate and chronic absenteeism, which is a testament of the value and the success stories that can occur when districts or LEAs align with the EWIMS theory. And now for some very specific, um, highlights or points of pride, we have two LEAs, two local districts, that we can share as a celebration today who have, who have successfully implemented EWIMS. First off, to the left, Genesee Public Schools ranks in the top 10 largest EWIMS districts for seeing improvements in both overall attendance rates and the rate of chronic absenteeism. Their attendance rate increased by 1.6% for the 2223 school year and by 0.8% for 202324, reaching 95.3%, which is a 4.5% higher than the state average. The rate of chronic absenteeism rate saw a notable decrease of 9.1% in 2223 and a 4.1% in 2324. This translates to an improvement of 13.2% over the past two years and surpasses the statewide decrease by 4.2%. Similarly, to the right, Grand Rapids Public Schools is among the 10 largest EWIMS districts to see improvements in both overall attendance rates and the rate of chronic absenteeism or chronically absent students. Of the 31 EWIMS districts serving at least 3,000 or more students, 17 saw both metrics increase, and Grand Rapids Public Schools should be congratulated, and that's why we are noting them today, as one of those 17. Attendance rates are lower in Grand Rapids Public Schools than statewide, but because of larger-than-statewide improvements in 2223, Grand Rapids Public Schools' total net improvement since 2122 is larger than statewide gains over that same time. And now, as we close, we are excited to share the following next steps. The MDE Attendance Team completed a state self-assessment for attendance using the outcomes. The team is dedicated to releasing both guidance and similar, um, support documents to the field. And we note here that the Student Engagement and Attendance Guidance Document is, has a targeted release date for fall of 2024. Additionally, the department will continue to promote increasing graduation rates. As shared in a, a presentation earlier today, we can't always wait until our learners reach high school. We must be intentional about engaging them and reaching them in the early grades. As such, the third volume of- As such, the third volume of our graduation rate increase will be geared towards the elementary students. Evidence-based outcomes of increasing graduation rate starts with engaging students at the onset of entering school. Our plan for the targeted release date of the third guidance document, which is for elementary students, is winter of 2024. And with that, we would like to say we appreciate the opportunity to share the data, efforts, and planned supports for increasing attendance and reducing chronic absenteeism. Thank you, and now back to you, Dr. Rice.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, Mr. Howell. Board members, questions, comments, concerns, fears, phobias, neuroses? Ms. Tilly.
That was very good. Thank you both for the presentation. This is very helpful. As always, I definitely would love to get more context behind the data. I went to, last month, I went to NASB to the leadership training, and we were talking about data and context, and we were talking about, one of the things we talked about was chronic absenteeism. And it was interesting because the person from Indiana, they said they realized that there was a correlation between rain, the days that it rains, and absenteeism. And I know we're here in Michigan, and I'm sure they get plenty of snow as well. And the kids are much different than, than when I was growing up, because you know, we walked through 15 feet of snow in my generation.
And then you have Dr. Rice and Judy's generation where they were chopping wood and walking 40 miles to school.
But.
It is.
We'll get cold for the stove before we went to school.
Do, do we have additional context, or is this everything that you're grabbing from the data?
We can, well, on the programmatic side, in terms of the supports and interventions that we are doing in the schools, we could definitely take a look at and try to look at patterns, you know, the, the height where it's more absenteeism versus not. So that's definitely something that we can track, Ms. Tilly. We can take a look at that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Senator Bullock.
So that was where my brain space is, and this is out of curiosity. I'm always about causation, right? And so, how she talked about the, the correlation to rain. One, I would like to know, do we have, what is our definition of unsheltered or homeless? Because I found out that true homelessness, non-traditional, generally, they on time because they want to get off the street. So, because they don't want to be in the rain, because if they don't have a place to stay, they really want to get somewhere that is safe and secure. Un, un, non-traditional is folks who like, I don't have a home, but I'm sleeping in her basement. I might not get up unless somebody's helping me with some responsibility. So, like, what is our definition of the unsheltered or homeless? And what's that causation? Like, do we, we can track these causations? Social economic status, I know schools that have laundromats. But like, I worked in a school where we didn't have a laundromat, but what we had was a pantry of uniform sizes donated by all past students. So, kids would come in early to get a fresh pair of pants and a shirt, and we had utensils, you know, necessities in there, toothbrush, little toothpaste, you know, things like that. So, I didn't know, and I know that now that we getting free breakfast going forward, the numbers, that might be a number that changes moving forward because now they're there to eat breakfast. And they're already in the building. So, you know, now, I know me, as a kid, what got me in trouble, even though I was allegedly a smart student, is my mother looked at, you know, I got an A, got a A, got a B, 27 absences from a class, and I still got a B. She's looking at the absences. She didn't care about that, you know, like, how you in school and missed this class 20 times, you know? So, those, those are different numbers. Because I'm just absent from that class. I don't like the teacher, or something else is going on around that time. I can sneak out the building, you know? We had driver's ed at Moford. I'd left the building a lot as if I was going to driver's ed. Brother's Boogaloo was around the corner. I had to get a fish out and talk. So, those are just like the things I wanted to know, like, are we, is there after-school program, or just those causations? Like, how do we know what it is that creates the absenteeism? And then we can classify it within those groups.
We can, we can definitely take a look at that and provide an update.
And then the last second thing was quick. You said we don't count the kids who aren't there. Like, like, they enrolled in school, but they not technically enrolled in school, maybe they weren't there counting, where does that number go?
So, we, we, we count them, but with mobile students who enroll for fewer than 10 days, they're not included in the official U.S. Department of Education calculations of chronic absenteeism. So, they, they are included in our data collections, in our data modeling. They're not included in the computations that are provided to U.S. Ed.
Does that district or that school follow up to see where the kid at?
Well, that would be a local.
There are 835 local school districts, and different, and different districts do it in different ways. Some, some districts are very.
Questions of curiosity.
Right, no, it's good, it's a good question. I'm just saying, there are districts that, that will knock on doors, and there are districts that will close them. So, that's the, that's the continuum of, of the outreach. People who will literally go to the door of the child or the non-door of the child. If they don't have a door, will go to a shelter to bring a kid to school. And then there are other people, there are other places that are, are delighted if, if a given child does not show up. And that's just being as direct as possible, and not telling you anything you didn't already know. All right, thank you. Ms. Kuzma.
First of all, thank you, because as a high school teacher, chronic absenteeism is something that, you know, happens, and I always say I can educate any child, but they have to walk into my door in order for me to do anything with that child. So, it's always such a frustrating experience as a teacher. But I had a couple of questions. First, well, questions slash comments, so I don't know, I could be in like three different directions. It's late in the afternoon. But first, my twin operates, she's the director of an alternative ed program, and this is kind of a larger issue of public transportation. She works out of Ypsilanti, and they are obsessed with making sure that their program is on a bus line, because if they're not on a bus line, their kids can't get to school. So, obviously, you know, that's a huge barrier, and I'd be very curious to see, like, how transportation options connect to schools that have higher rates of chronic absenteeism. So, that was one thing. And the second, I was wondering if there was any outreach to employers that have a lot of younger employees, because I know that there's child labor laws, but it would be a really cool reminder for them to kind of like impress upon the importance of getting to school the next day. So, you work your McDonald's shift, and then, hey, like, just letting you know, you need to get to school in the morning, because I have a lot of kids who, even if they get off work at 7:00 o'clock, if it was a tough afternoon, they're like, you know, the first hour, it's not really looking too good. So, I just wonder if there's any outreach that can be come there, because in our district, we definitely see it spike in first hour. Like, the kids are just not coming in the door, and once they're in the door, we usually can keep them there, unless there's a really good lunch special. Make no promises. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Yep, we will look into that.
Ms. Kuzma, other questions or comments, reflections? Just two other, three other things. One, Dr. Corinne Edwards is sitting as Director of Office of Educational Support, is as far away from me as possible in this room while still being in the room. Dr. Edwards, we appreciate you being here today. Liz Newell, our state administrator, supporting the MDE Attendance Team, is here today. We appreciate her in the room. And Anne Marie Mappe, Special Assistant to Dr. Chapman, is here with us as well. A snippet about communities and schools, which really focuses in on the issue of attendance, and then let's go out to the aggregate numbers. So, Communities and Schools works in a variety of communities across the state. It has what it calls an integrated student support model with a, an individual at each of the local schools that is responsible for coordinating these supports with community, with the district. And some of those sports, supports are around attendance and are around chronic absenteeism. This work around attendance, particularly for children who struggle with chronic absenteeism, is tremendously granular. It is one-on-one work, it is eye-level work, it is knock-on-the-door work, it is call mom, dad, grandma, grandpa work, it is doing whatever it takes to get junior in the door. So, we can talk a lot about global strategies, and, and they're fine for a board conversation. But in local schools, it's not about big, broad conversations, it's about what brings Mikey in the door. And maybe it's, maybe it's breakfast that brings Mikey in the door. And maybe it's the connection with Mr. Jones or Mrs. Smith that brings Mikey in the door. Maybe it's the after-school sports that brings Mikey in the door. And you can't play sports after school if you are not in school during school. Maybe it's about the childcare burden that needs to be removed from mom or grandma so that junior can go to school. Maybe it's about homelessness, maybe it's about transportation, maybe it's about a fear of mathematics, it's about a whole host of different things. Most of the kids end up at school most of the time. That's the good news. The bad news is, is that for a chunk of our children disproportionately poor, disproportionately challenged by adverse childhood circumstances, homelessness, foster care situations, and, 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 they struggle disproportionately. And you can say, well, you know, dude, 90%, you know, back in the day, Lisa Hands Connect, 90%, that was an A minus. A lot of us were pretty good with, with 90% in school. And when it was an A minus, that was great, but when it's defined as chronic absenteeism, which is what 90% is in the federal definition, two days a month is-ish 90% attendance rate. And you know, you think about showing up 90% of the time, it sounds pretty good, but you think about what you miss, and particularly if you're not that great a student, if you're a little bit wobbly, if you're a little bit uncertain, every day is important. It's a momentum piece, it's a confidence piece, it's a, it's a keeping up piece, it's a sense of keeping up piece. All those are important, and it's all granular. It's all individual kid by individual kid, individual family by individual family. So, I just share that because strong proponent of communities and schools, we had it in my former district, it's in Battle Creek, it's in, it's in some of the Detroit public schools, and a number of other school districts across the state. It's in Northwest Michigan. But most of our districts don't have a communities and schools. Most of our, our districts are trying to cobble it together themselves with limited helping professionals, which we're going to talk about in a few minutes. They don't have people to whom to delegate these functions. So, that, that elementary teacher, take a Candace Jackson who was at this table board last year. Candace Jackson, two years ago, had 33 children, third-grade classroom, DPSCD. When I went to visit her, that was her job to get those babies into school. Didn't have a team helping her get those children into school, they were her children. That was part of her responsibility, among many responsibilities. So, the supports in schools to support kids out of schools are critical, and they're in part to the ratios to which Dr. Robinson spoke, they're in part to the helping professionals that Dr. Pew is going to speak. But we all kind of have to get eye-level with kids and figure out what brings them in the door and what keeps them in the door. I had one child who was sneaking out of my alternative high school. He was a mentee of mine. And I said to him, I said, Ray, Ray Sean, I said, I, I, I would, I'd like to know where you are with respect to graduation. I knew where he was with respect to graduation. I had all, all the records. But I wanted to hear what he had to say to me. He said, well, you know, I'm four credits shy, but three of them are math, and so I'm not going to graduate because I can't do math. I said, who told you you can't do math? He said, I know I can't do math. So, I asked him a few math questions. He was fine, he was rusty, but he was fine. I said, look, let's do this. You stop leaving school, third period. When you're supposed to be in math class in Ms. Wilson Banks's class, I'll get you a math tutor, we'll get you across the finish line. He said, what you mean sneaking out of class? Sneaking out of school? I said, I laughed, I said, Ray Sean, you know I have access to these, these data, right? Okay, you know we have cameras in the hallways. You need to be in that math class. He said, I hate her and she hates me. I said, I can't speak to that, okay? I can't speak to what's in your head. She doesn't hate you. She doesn't like you sneaking out of her class, but she does not hate you. Stay in the class, I'll get you a tutor, we'll get you across the finish line. Sometimes it's just one-on-one conversations that make it happen, okay? You know, we, we talk a lot about the global, but at the end of the day, it's the one-on-one that changes behavior in so many different cases. I just share that anecdote. Some people don't like anecdotes, but I think sometimes pictures are worth 1,000 words, and that's a picture. So, to Tom Howell and Dr. Chapman's summary, we, we have increased attendance two years running. We have cut the gap in half that was created during the pandemic. So, we've made back two of the four percentage points, two more to be made to get back to that 93%. We've reduced chronic absenteeism by nine percentage points in two years. We've got another nine to make up to get back to pre-pandemic levels. And to Robert Frost, the woods are lovely, dark and deep, to paraphrase, but we have promises to keep and miles to go before we sleep. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Board, we are at the, the point in our agenda that we, we all look forward to remarks from our board president.
So, this is October 8th. This month is Hispanic Heritage Month, and so we still have seven days to continue to recognize the contributions and the influence of Hispanic Americans to this nation, to the culture and our history. So, this year's theme is Pioneers of Change and Shaping Future Together. Just wanted to bring light to that, in addition to this being Farm to School Month that I learned of this morning. This month, I've had the opportunity to attend, just last week, Karen Lansing, the My Brothers' Keeper Gen, which Gen stands for Girls, I'm forgetting the E-word, I'll think of it soon, but it's My Brothers' Keepers and it's Girls Network, and the theme was transforming education to be a job creator and to be job creators and looking at the P through 20 entrepreneurial pathways. And there was focus on entrepreneurship in the space of social and economic justice. Had the opportunity to attend SAG and R United's ribbon cutting, and I mentioned that I would like to make sure that the board is invited to the next event that they're having. It was coming up quick, so, and I think, Dr. Rice, you've spoken to Superintendent Roberts, Dr. Roberts. Dr. Roberts, and so there are some other opportunities. It's amazing and beautiful, $85 million building that has, that has been built and it is a state-of-the-art building that I hope that we all get a chance to, to see. Because as we've said, in many of our meetings, we don't always see new buildings being built for our children. Had the opportunity, had been invited to a few preregistration as we remember, we had a presentation from our Secretary of State, our Deputy, Deputy Secretary of State and official. And there is the new law where students can now preregister at the age of 16. So I had the opportunity to go to Success Academy and have conversations with students, many of them who, when I asked them to raise their hands, if they have voted before, there were a few 18-year-olds. And then there were 16-year-olds in that group and there were very few who raised their hands and said that they had plans to vote. And speaking of having these personal relationships, there's just a lot of work to do. There was one story that I heard maybe a few days after I left where a student said that they actually were thinking about now running for, for office. So we talked about the opportunity to serve in office, to definitely vote, to work as poll workers. And so there's just a lot of work to be done in that space. But we do, we are blessed to be in this state. Another first, and that is to have that preregistration opportunity. And I will just say that one of, you know, I, I just wanted to emphasize again, today's presentation, it was really good to have my leap here, but I do have concerns, Dr. Rice, with this being a new, a new fiscal year and that we are still responsible for or have the responsibility of upholding some of the responsibilities of my leap. Also to board member Tilly's point, I agree. We, we celebrated, I think in two presentations, one during public comments and then during the my leap, some successes, whether it was the 6.1% increase in certificate degrees or the teacher stipends and knowing that this department definitely has contributed to those, to those numbers. So that is my report. I will say that the MBK, Michigan, are My Brothers' Keeper, G N stands for, of course, My Brothers' Keeper and Girls Equity Network. So that is all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Remarks to the superintendent will be relatively brief. On Tuesday, October 1st, one week ago, Dr. Renee Garcia, Dan Centers, Dave Head, and I visited Godfrey Lee Public Schools for the presentation of the 21st Century Model School Library Award for the 2024-2025 school year. And Jen Cook is going to share with us a little video collage of pictures, if we could. The guy in the back who's the tallest representation of the Statue of Liberty there, the number one in the state, is Harry Coffel. And it is his library that we were celebrating, 21st Century School Library. There's Randy Riley, the state librarian, next to him, a number of children from Lee Middle and High School. So just, just roll, roll through it completely and then I'll share a little bit in, in terms Now we're at East Kentwood, which is 15, 15 minutes away. So thank you very much, Jen. So the Lee Middle and High School Library, led by Harry Coffel, is a prime example of how partnerships with community libraries can significantly expand resources and opportunities for students and teachers alike. It was a pleasure to attend with state librarian Randy Riley, to be joined there by lots of students, by Dr. Arnetta Thompson, the superintendent, Ms. Rose, the middle school principal, who is not a rose by any other name, but a rose by name, as well as many of our friends from the Michigan Association of School Librarians, Maisel, including Kathy Lester. We were delighted to celebrate, as we always are, literacy libraries and librarians, as well as diversity in literacy, not only in Godfrey Lee, but across the state. We feel strongly, Board, as you know, that children should see themselves and others in the literature that they read and that they should be able to enter other worlds through their literature. This is what we refer to as mirrors, windows, and sliding doors from Professor Emerita, Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop's work. In the afternoon, I visited, as you saw, East Kentwood High School. That was a very different experience. 15 minutes away, a very different, diverse world. And had I gone 15 minutes in another direction, I would have had another representation of diversity or lack thereof. So Godfrey Lee educates a population which is 79% Latino. East Kentwood is a, is a, is an ethnic stew. It has national flags hanging from the entry, in the entryway. You saw a number of them. There are 80 flags in the entryway. 97 countries represented in the district, 110 languages spoken in the district, not by all children. We appreciated interacting with kids in Godfrey Lee. We appreciated interacting with them in East Kentwood, including one of the students, interestingly enough, it's kind of a full circle moment, Keon, who presented to this state Board of Education with African-American AP Studies teacher Matt Vriesman last April. Interestingly enough, he got in my ear in, in, in conversation and wanted to know what the board had to, had to say or, or had to thought about his, his presentation. And I said, well, I thought that the board as a, as a whole was impressed by the presentation. But I also emphasized that whether people value what you care to share, it's important that you share. East Kentwood's flags and what they represent, Board, the great diversity in the school, the district, state, nation, and world reminded me of my, my family's own immigrant story. I have the citizenship paper, Ms. Lipton, of my great-grandfather, Isaac Friedman, of blessed memory, who came to this country 127 years ago this month. Like so many immigrants, my great-grandfather experienced his share of challenges in coming to a new land, learning a new language, figuring out how to support a family, adopting new customs, acculturating himself. His son, my grandfather, would be the first in our family to go to college. His granddaughter, my mother, the first to graduate from college. Most of us come from somewhere else, if you go back far enough. And most of us are pretty ordinary, Diane Kozemski, whether you go back in the day or not, whether you're selling fruits and vegetables, like my great-grandfather, a true mensch did, or the need for funding to address the teacher shortage or children's mental health, like his great-grandson, a menschgala, does. Whether they have to navigate the challenges of immigration or not, children have the right to be free of behavior that makes them feel less than. And educators have the responsibility to educate children in ways that make children feel welcome, not stigmatized. It was beautiful last week to be in two such schools, among many, many in the state, whose educators welcome all children and who embrace all children for their strengths and assets, Ms. Kuzma, while they work to continue to lift up and educate children to be all that they can be in their lives. We should welcome our immigrant students and families in our schools and communities. After all, if you go back far enough, many of us are in fact those immigrants. Thank you. At this time, 3:22, we'll be welcoming Bob Wheaton, Director of the Office of Governmental Affairs, and Dr. Cheryl Kennedy, our legislative liaison, to the table to regale you for all things legislative. Gentle people, welcome.
Good afternoon, board members. As you know, the legislators have been on recess, but Dr. Cheryl Kennedy has not been on recess and she has some information to share.
Thank you. So on October 3rd, the governor signed House Bill 5803, which is the Mipser's Contribution Bill, not to be confused with what initially was a line item in the budget. So the, the line item in the budget that allowed for the 3%, the contribution is now, is now a part of, of larger legislation. And so it, that's, that's the way of the land from this point on. Senate Bills 567 and 568, our literacy bills, have been presented to the governor and they must, they were presented today, they must be signed within 14 days. We had a school aid supplemental, House Bill 5503, that was presented to the governor on October 2nd. A bill we haven't talked about for a while, Senate Bill 744, aligned language regarding teacher probationary periods. That was an amendment that needed to be done following the teacher evaluation law changes. And that actually was signed today. It is now PA 234 of 2024. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Kennedy. Questions, reflections, board members? We do have two resolutions to consider soon. I'd like to, while, while board members are thinking of questions or comments, I'd like to acknowledge Olivia Ponte in the audience, legislative analyst, who is everywhere that Dr. Kennedy is.
She's my right brain, for sure.
Have a right brain. Anything for the, the good of the order. If not, we appreciate the, the contributions. We particularly appreciate the passage of the reading slash dyslexia bills, soon to be signed into law. Those are enormous contributions to the education of children, enormous. Arguably the most important freestanding legislation outside of a budget passed for public education over the last decade. So kudos to the, the team for the strong work in, in that regard because the, the MDE team put an enormous amount of effort into the passage of those bills. Now we enter a new chapter in the development of screeners and development of approved early literacy materials, not later literacy materials, but early literacy materials to get children off to a strong start so that when teachers are teaching middle school and high school, they're teaching content and not the ability to read. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Dr. Pew, you have two resolutions. Would you like to move one of them?
Sure. I moved to the resolution, the state Board of Education resolution in support of adequate recurring funding for children's mental health and school safety.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second by Senator Bullock. If we could please, Dr. Pew, if you would be kind enough to read that into the record because I do not believe that that was done this morning.
It was not. So whereas the state Board of Education has regularly advocated for children's mental health and school safety funding in the State School Aid Act, whereas its last meeting, the state Board of Education approved a resolution to strongly encourage the Michigan Legislature to restore in a budget supplemental, the Section 31AA of children's mental health and school safety funding that the legislature had cut in the fiscal year 25 state budget, whereas the legislature had heated the call of the state Board of Education, state superintendent, different education organizations, organizations and individual educators, and restored 126.5 million of the funding in a budget supplemental in late September, whereas notwithstanding the appreciation for the restoration of one-eighth of a billion dollars to the budget for schools' mental, children's mental health and school safety, the restored funds were designated as one-time funds and the legislature made clear that these funds were only for fiscal year 25. Whereas veteran Michigan educators recall a time in the not-so-distant past, prior to fiscal year 19, when Michigan provided no funding for children's mental health in the State School Aid Act, whereas funding for children's mental health, school safety increased from $0 in fiscal year 18 to $31.3 million in fiscal year 19, $31.3 million in fiscal year 20, $45.8 million in fiscal year 21, 179.3 million in fiscal year 2022, 376.4 million in fiscal year 23, 2023, and 491.8 million in fiscal year 2024. Whereas the fiscal year 2025 State School Aid Act now includes 107.8 million in recurring Section 31N funds to support the intermediate school district social workers who push into local school districts to provide services to students, 25 million in recurring Section 31AA funds and the 126.5 million in non-recurring Section 31AA funds, the latter two categories of which flow to local school districts on a per pupil basis. Whereas Michigan school districts have benefited from these recurring Section 31N funds and former, formerly appropriated and not non, and non-recurring Section 31O funds, the latter of which require the district to fully fund in year four, this year, the helping professionals initially supported by Section 31O funds. Whereas these 31N and 31O funds have permitted Michigan school districts to add 1,700 helping professionals. Those are school social workers, guidance counselors, nurses, and social psychologists in their schools in the last five years in support of schoolchildren. Whereas notwithstanding these significant and important increases in helping professionals, Michigan students, staff, and schools still require more helping professionals. Whereas Section 31AA funds need to be stable to support the children's mental health and school safety needs across the state, not one-and-done or two-and-gone funding, including but not limited to increases in the recruitment, hiring, professional development, and sustained retention of helping professionals that support students and teachers in schools throughout the state. Whereas school safety is strengthened and, and fighting, is strengthened and fighting, bullying long-term and suspensions and expulsions reduced, with the presence of alternatives to dispute resolutions such as conflict resolution, restorative justice practices, peer mediators, peace circles, and various efforts to bridge differences between students or groups of students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the state Board of Education calls on Michigan Legislature and Governor Whitmer to continue to provide per pupil children's mental health and school safety funding to school districts on a recurring basis in fiscal year 2026 and beyond to fully support Michigan students and staff. And there comes Dr. Rice. While he's coming, I will thank board member Lipton and Dr. Rice for assisting me in putting that together.
So we have a, we have a motion. We have a second. It's been read into the record. Dr. Pew, would you like to speak to it in any additional fashion or are we going to pivot to others?
We can pivot to others. I spoke earlier this morning.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. McMillan.
I do have, as I mentioned, an amendment. It would simply, at the very last word, "staff," and then "now therefore be it resolved," it says, the amendment in section, and I, did you email it to everybody?
I saved it in the SharePoint folder, and Jeannie's bringing it around for those that need a paper copy.
Yeah, and then I took it. All right. The amendment reads, "In Section 13, in the 'now therefore be it resolved' section, after the word, last word, 'staff,' add, quote, comma, 'as long as parents can use the funds to take their child to get mental health assistance from a provider that they feel is best for their child,' period, close quote."
Okay. So, board members, thank you, Jeannie. Does everyone have their copy? Cool. You've got this? Good. Okay. Does everybody see where it fits into the resolution that Dr. Pugh put forward? Because I want people to understand what they're voting on.
I second it.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion and a second for an amendment to the base resolution. Mr. McMillan, back to you to speak to.
I think that there's different angles, different, actually, and sometimes different worldviews as to what the best mental health assistance for their child would be, and if these funds are being provided and the only thing that is being provided by a school is something that clashes with their worldview, maybe they don't want their kindergartner being told that they are a boy, but they can be a girl, they don't, which happens, which actually, I know kindergarten teachers that are leaving or have left because they couldn't keep doing that, asking the kids, kindergartners with pronoun and not being allowed to tell the parents either. So these things are happening, the child goes to a mental health person at the school, will they conform to the parent's worldview? The child says that they feel like they need a litter box because they feel like they're a cat, you know, is this something that the mental health professional is going to condone, to encourage? But then there's 50,000 other, or 50, you know, 50, 100 or more other situations where the parents may not like the view that the school, the government worker may steer their child or provide. So I think it's important that if there's going to be these kind of funds, that parents are able to do what they feel is best for their child. I hope that's not a novel concept, but I know the government likes to shape these kids in what they want, as opposed to what the parents want often. So I'm hoping that that will not be the view with these mental health dollars.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second for Mr. McMillan's amendment. He's explained the logic of his amendment as offered. Ms. Snyder, to you. Unless, I beg your pardon, unless there's anyone else who has, you go, you roll. Okay, your first bite, I beg your pardon. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I would take it, I mean, it's obviously a very controversial version of mental health help that Tom just shared. I think one that isn't as controversial but real in this space is the direction that mental health is going in with harm reduction principles and drug use and substance use. And I actually know a parent who lost their child, and it came to light after the drug overdose happened, that this child was being taught harm reduction principles within the substance use treatment that they were essentially getting at school, when they really should have been referred to a substance use program, expert use program outside of school, and that could have saved their life. So there are, you know, beyond, you know, religion and beyond different things like that, there actually are, is fair debate within mental health in terms of how a parent would approach something like substance use and the treatment thereof. And, you know, that probably affects more students than I would even say, you know, the concept of transgenderism and how we move forward society in that perspective. But parents have got to know about these things. And when the age of consent in Michigan for a minor is 14, and a parent would otherwise have stepped in and said, you know what, I would kick it up a notch and take my kid to rehabilitation, and not encourage him to stay in school because that's the tension that we're working with, and they're getting harm reduction principles instead of true life-saving treatment to end the addiction or to stop substance abuse, and then their life is actually saved because of it, you know, I think that that's something the parent absolutely has to be directly engaged with. And so the amendment that you proposed, Tom, I think is extremely important, and I just really do hope that you guys would hear it from that perspective.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Other board members and their reflections. Please, Mr. Bullock.
I'm still choosing now, but I'm voting no, because no one is teaching five, six, seven-year-olds any of this madness. Now whether you have a case in your repertoire that you, which is an extreme case, that is fine, but if you want, you as a parent should know your child, and if there's something has been identified and you don't like the service that the school is providing, take them to where you would like them to go. Use your own health service, your own health benefits, or whatever it is that you have at your disposal to get your child some help. I think, I'm tired of beating this dead horse about certain things, and I'm at that point on this one. Let's call for the vote.
Okay. So it's a little early to call for the vote, but I do appreciate the sentiment. I feel something's calling. But I would like to give this a full airing, if other board members care to share, because we've only had three that have, four that have weighed in so far. So if the other four cared to weigh in, I'd like to give them the opportunity to weigh in. Dr. Robinson, Ms. Lipton, Ms. Tilly, Dr. Pritchett. Okay. Hearing and seeing none. Dr. Pugh, back to you. This is an amendment to your resolution. Your thoughts?
You know, and when it was on paper, and I was reading it, I was willing to entertain it, but when you began talking and giving an explanation, I would have to agree with Senator Bullock. We keep bringing these extreme nuances over and over again. I do recall a presentation from, regarding the mental health services in school, hearing after the presenters were badgered, that these are the same professionals in the schools that we will find outside of the schools. As a matter of fact, we want dollars to make sure that we can drive more professionals because we don't have enough professionals in schools or outside of schools. I will not vote to include this. I trust the professionals in the schools and trust them to include parents, as they always have and as they are required by law.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Anything more for the good of the group? If not, we are voting on Mr. McMillan's amendment to the base resolution, not the base resolution itself. Please.
I just want to clarify, in addition to there being mental health programs that parents can take their children to outside of the school, which also, there are mental health programs for low-income families, specifically substance abuse. There are a lot of programs, facilities, prevention programs that work within the schools and outside of the schools that parents can use as resources as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Hearing no other reflections. I'm looking around, I'm given an opportunity. Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Evans, a roll call vote on the amendment.
Bullock?
Negative.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Dr. Pugh, you have a second resolution?
Yes. So I move for the adoption of the State Board of Education resolution to support the funding of special education. I read this into the minutes earlier this morning. I think that it is pretty straightforward. This is something that supports what we've been saying about special education for many years, since I've been on this board, and we talked about these laws going into effect 1975 and then 1990, and by decision-makers, policymakers, presidents that don't share the same, a party as I do. And so I'll let you move or call for the vote, or call for the support, and then I'll come back to discussion. I guess I'm moving ahead.
We have a motion, we have a circumlocutious motion from our inestimable board president, Dr. Pugh. Do we have a second? Second from Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh, back to you, if you care to speak to it.
Again, I think that there definitely is a lot that we can speak to around special education. This won't be our first and won't be our last. Again, I thank Ellen for helping me with this and for Dr. Rice's assistance as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Please.
I support this. I think unfunded mandates are a bad thing, and so I certainly will support this.
Thank you very much. Ms. Evans, a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans. Comments by State Board of Education members? Anybody care to share? Ms. Tilly?
I want to make mention of a couple of things. I went to, last month, to the Fostering Futures event to raise scholarships for foster students, and this was the second year in a row where MDE was a table sponsor. And definitely want to thank the department for doing such. It was another great year and record-breaking year because we raised over $90,000 for scholarships for foster youth. So very, very happy about that. Love the work that they're doing, that the treasurer, the state treasurer is doing with that program, and her staff is amazing. Also, wanted to make mention of CAC. I got a chance to go to CAC to do the welcome. It was my second time doing it and trying to share a little inspiration and motivation with the participants. I want to thank Thierry for having me, and I really want us to support the work that they're doing. They're doing an amazing job. I know they're coming next month to present, and I encouraged the members, because I don't, you know, I don't see a lot of members coming to the meetings, so I encouraged them to come to the meetings so that they can give comments. They have a lot of firsthand knowledge in their communities of what's going on with special needs children. They're either working in the schools or working for organizations or closely related, and now it's opened up, from my understanding, this year to advocates, not just the experts. So I told them it's a great opportunity for them to come advocate and really let us know what issues that they're seeing and that we're facing as a state, but in particularly in their communities, as well as, you know, what are some of the good things that they're seeing that we can benefit from hearing as well, so we can share that with other parts of the state. So very excited about CAC coming next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Anyone else for the good of the group? Once, twice, thrice, please.
Happy Halloween.
Thank you very much. Happy holiday to you as well. There you go. Next three state board meetings are November 12, December 10, and January 14, all regular meetings, all Tuesdays, all 9:30 a.m. If there are any topics board members would like to recommend for future meeting agendas, please let Ms. Evans or me know. Board, it's 3:48. Enjoy the gift of time.